We have two meetings tonight. We have our regular council meeting, which we have scheduled from 4:30 to 6:00. I'm really hopeful, council, that we can get it done by 6:00, and I'd ask that you all be mindful of your comments accordingly, so that we can start our second meeting. I'd like to welcome and thank all of our broadcast and journalist partners who are here with us tonight. Welcome everybody in the gallery, and we can get the meeting going. Madam Clerk?
Under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, a motion by councillors Hoopan and Turco, resolved at the minutes of regular council meeting, February 22, 2016, be approved.
All in favor. Carried.
Under Agenda Item 3, Declaration of Pecuniary Interest, councillor Crumpadich has declared a conflict with respect to Agenda Item 7.1.1, as he's employed by S.R. Steel Algoma.
Any other conflicts, council? Seeing none, we can move on.
Under Agenda Item 4, a motion by councillors Shoemaker and Nero, resolved that the Agenda for March 7, 2016, city council meeting as presented, be approved.
All in favor. Carried.
And under Agenda Item 5.1, Elimination of Racial Discrimination, Danny Crumpadich, program coordinator of the local immigration program, is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Mr. Crumpadich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination is an opportunity for us, along with the whole of our community, to renew our commitment to building a world of justice, equality, and dignity where racial discrimination has no place. On this day, Mr. Mayor, we must recall that respect of others is essential to respect for ourselves, and that humanity is a single family brought together by shared aspirations and a common destiny. Lasting peace can only be built on the equality and dignity of everyone, regardless of ethnic, religious, gender, socioeconomic, or other backgrounds. On behalf of our local immigration partnership, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you. So we have the proclamation. Whereas the municipality of Sault Ste. Marie is committed to the belief that equal opportunity and treatment should exist for all people, and whereas the concept of diversity encompasses acceptance and respect, and recognizes that each individual is unique. This includes race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, age, physical ability, religious belief, political belief, or other ideology. A community that values diversity moves beyond simple tolerance to embracing and celebrating the uniqueness of every individual. And whereas the General Assembly of the United Nations has designated March 21st as the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination, and whereas the elimination of racism and racial discrimination can be accomplished through understanding and respect for the dignity of all people, and is the social and moral responsibility of each person. Now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim March 21st, 2016, as the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination in the City of Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you.
And under Agenda Item 5.2, Red Cross Month, Louisa Van Lith, Community Support Services Coordinator, is in attendance.
Welcome to council.
Hey.
How are you?
I'm fine, thanks.
Good.
Good afternoon. My name is Louisa Van Lith, and I am in the unique position of being both a volunteer and a paid staffer at the Canadian Red Cross. I began my affiliation with the Canadian Red Cross 12 years ago as public relations coordinator. During that time, I joined disaster management program and have continued as a volunteer for 10 years. I have recently been hired as a Community Support Services Coordinator, working with vulnerable seniors in our community. The mission of the Canadian Red Cross is to improve the lives of vulnerable people by mobilizing the power of humanity in Canada and around the world. As March is Red Cross Month, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie for their generous support. Your donations of time and funds enable us to work toward our mission. In 2015, the Sault Ste. Marie branch celebrated its 100th anniversary. That's 100 years of providing service to vulnerable people in Sault Ste. Marie. Whether it's assisting people who have been devastated by a house, fire, or a flood, or helping those who have been evacuated from their homes due to a disaster, Red Cross volunteers are ready to help. The Canadian Red Cross offers programs that help vulnerable seniors stay safely in their homes. These programs include home maintenance, which provide house cleaning, snow removal and grass cutting, transportation, where volunteers provide rides to medical appointments and grocery shopping, friendly visiting and telephone assurance, which provides companionship and a sense of security, and assisted living for high-risk seniors, for people who require personal care to stay in their homes. Citizens are also served through community programs such as first aid, CPR, and babysitting courses, which provide valuable life-saving training, community kitchens programs, where participants share skills, ideas, and money to stretch their family's food budget, and the community gardens program, where participants learn to take responsibility for the well-being of a garden. The community of Sault Ste. Marie has always supported the work of the Canadian Red Cross through financial donations and through their volunteer efforts. We currently have an urgent need for volunteers in our transportation and friendly visiting programs. Many seniors in our community who want to stay in their own homes are dependent upon these services, and the Red Cross depends on volunteers to provide this often life-saving care. I urge anyone who would like to know more about volunteering for the Canadian Red Cross to call our office, or to drop by at 105 Allard Street, and find out how you can help. So on behalf of the Canadian Red Cross, Sault Ste. Marie and District Branch, I would like to thank mayor and council, the many departments of the city that we work in collaboration with, and the members of our great community for the support they have shown and continue to show us in our efforts to assist the most vulnerable. A heartfelt thank you to our entire community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Van Lith. Read the proclamation. Whereas the Canadian Red Cross Society has been engaged in preventing and alleviating human suffering across Canada and around the world for over 100 years, and whereas the Canadian Red Cross Society has helped thousands of Canadians through its disaster relief and community health and wellness services, including our own citizens of Sault Ste. Marie, and whereas the Canadian Red Cross Society is a reflection of the Canadian spirit of generosity, caring, and selflessness. Now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, by virtue of the power vested in me as the mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, hereby proclaim March 2016 as Red Cross Month here in Sault Ste. Marie. I also urge all residents of Sault Ste. Marie to support the Canadian Red Cross Society and our community by regularly volunteering their time, or by financially supporting Red Cross programs across the world and across the street. Thank you.
Thanks. Under Agenda Item 6, Consent, a motion by councillors Hoopan and Turco, resolved that all items listed under date March 7, 2016, Part 1, Consent Agenda, be approved as recommended.
So councillor Turco, you'd like to speak tonight on the consent agenda?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. More of a question, a couple of short questions.
Sure. Which item are you?
6.4, 6.5.
Okay.
Kind of related, Mr. Mayor, the Gore Street reconstruction.
Go ahead.
Mr. Don Elliott, there he is. Don, so can you just, you know, give us a background, short background on, we're doing, in your notes you say that we're putting off Bay Street so we can proceed with Gore Street? And what's the timeline in that?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Turco, yes. Bay Street resurfacing was part of the 2015 capital plan, but because tenders came in high last year, we had to defer Bay Street, but there is some money left, and it's probably most of what we need, if not all of what we need, to complete reconstruction of Gore Street.
So is Bay Street, just a couple of more follow-up questions, is Bay Street still on the horizon down the road?
Yeah, Bay Street, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Turco, Bay Street needs to be resurfaced. We know that. We're just gonna have to rely on the good offices of Mr. Girardi and his crew to patch it up for another year or two.
And the other thing, I was at that open house with other councillors, and councillor Nero, are we talking, when we're doing Gore Street, are we thinking to make it, is there discussion on one lane, or keep it as two-lane as well?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Turco, there will be two lanes on Gore Street.
And all the other?
There's a lot of surface amenities that Don McConnell's grant from NOHFC is going to cover. Our concern from the Engineering Division is not putting all the new stuff on top without replacing the 112-year-old sanitary sewer, so.
And are we starting, to you, Mr. Mayor, are we starting this year?
The intention is to complete it this year, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else in 6.4, 6.5, on those matters, councillor Shoemaker? Go ahead.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, on the streetscape, public open house. It was, I went that night, and it, there must have been 150 people there. It was a great turnout, and the staff, planning staff especially, were all very helpful. I saw a lot of residents talking to them, so it was, I thought it was a great event.
Thank you. Okay. Are those the extent of your matters, councillor Turco?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any other matters in the consent agenda, council? It's fantastic. Seeing none. We've read the motion, all in favor. Carried. Madam Clerk, you can continue on.
Under Agenda Item 7.1.1, S.R. Steel Restructuring Community Response, a motion by councillors Shoemaker and Nero, resolved that the report of the Chief Administrative Officer dated March 7, 2016, regarding S.R. Steel Restructuring Community Response be received as information, and that council approve the city making an application through the CAO's office under the Province of Ontario's Community Adjustment Advisory Program to secure resources to coordinate the city's ongoing response to current economic shifts using principles described in the Community Response Action Plan of the Sault Ste. Marie EDC City-Community Plan and Corporate Strategic Plan.
Okay, so discussion on this motion. Councillor Butland?
Yes, a couple of questions. I know from whence this came, or how long ago it was here, but it was given to, distributed to council and staff. On January 26, EDC Chair wrote mayor and council requesting their endorsement of an application for, I think, the community, well, I know, the Community Adjustment Fund application. And it was suggested at that time that would, was advised by staff that they would be making the application. My question is, did it really matter who was making the application? This just delayed the process again.
I can speak to that, councillor Butland, because I think it does matter. We've had a number of discussions with MCTU, the Minister of Colleges and Training Universities, and they'd indicated that either the EDC or the city could make the application, and that it was quite often that communities made the application, so we had to have an assessment in City Hall about whether or not the city was the more appropriate party. So those discussions were had between the Director of Planning, Mr. McConnell, the CEO, Mr. Horstman, my office, and MCTU staff, and we received significant information from MCTU staff. And as a result of that, we had some discussions with the EDC. We advised the EDC that there was interest on staff's part to bring this to council and have council lead it, and we thought it was the most appropriate course of action. So as a result, it's here in front of you.
Okay, it's better said in comments, but again, it's, it is a one-month delay, and does it really matter by whom is the application made? The actual fund, get back on track, to the CAO, how much time do you anticipate before we'll have approval for this application?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Butland, of course, we cannot comment on, excuse me, bit of a cold today, we cannot comment on what the province mayor may not do. The expectation is it'd be rather quick, because we've already vetted through the initial parts of the application. It was simply a question of who would be the sponsor for that application. So my guess would be, and my hope would be, three to five weeks at the outset, and that would include identifying a lead for the program and identifying what financial resources would be required under the program.
And talking earlier with you today, I was, I was surprised, but shouldn't be surprised, that I was surprised. Anyway, this is a provincial fund that we're applying for, and what are the guidelines, and what is the intended use of these monies? And how much are we anticipating?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Butland, this is a provincial program that's run by the Ministry of Training Colleges and Universities, MTCU is the acronym. The amount that we'd be looking for is up to $200,000. There's two pieces to the program that's identified in the Community Adjustment Advisory Program, advisory services and financial services, financial assistance. The expectation is the advisory services would be provincial parties, but could be other, augmented with other assistance, and the lead would be identified as a community lead, someone that would be related to the community. The program itself was spurred from a recognition in Northern Ontario that there are some communities that are having these types of challenges, and therefore was established to be able to address these types of economic pushes, i.e. downturns and/or layoffs, significant changes economically. And again, it's the Ministry of Training Colleges and University that's the host for the program.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll comment.
Any other questions about it? Councillor Shoemaker. Oh, sorry, I had councillor Christian first. Go ahead, councillor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Butland asked one of the questions I had. As far as the Community Adjustment Program, it's a, it's a grant, and there's no, there's no cost to the city, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Although there will be city resources that will be applied to the program, it's, it's looked to be, we're looking at any contribution from the city, so it would be in-kind contributions, not physical dollars.
Okay. And I was reading in a couple of pieces of documentation, because we, we got something from the EDC, and we also had your report, which was, which was very thorough. I just want to be clear on something. What's the difference between the Community Response Action Plan and the Community Response Committee? I'm a little confused. That's, I needed clarification on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there was a, again, as described by the mayor at the outset, there was work being undertaken already by EDC, who had put together an action plan, response action plan. In terms of the discussions that happened in late January, early February, we recognized it was this one program for the specific purpose of employment and training issues, and so that's where the Community Action, Community Adjustment Advisory Program was, was identified, and that's where the distinction is. There still would be interest in what's going on with the actual community response plan generally and overall. This is the sort of first step to get us to deal with the employment component and the training component for those that are displaced workers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Councillor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Butland touched on the funding from the province. If there are costs that, for some reason, need to be incurred before the funding comes in, will, will the city be prepared to sort of front-load those costs so that we can get the ball rolling on this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As the report outlines, through you to councillor Shoemaker, the, as the report outlines, we are already doing a lot of things within existing budgets to address the unique circumstance that is facing the city at this current time. And again, need to remind, it's not just S.R. restructuring and the CCAA process, or sorry for those at home, the Companies Creditors Arrangement Act proceedings that are currently underway, there's Tenaris, there's issues, we know that there's gonna be some changes with OLG in terms of their modernization efforts. So we are using existing budgets, and we're trying to work within existing budgets to, to deal with that, and we will, of course, welcome any further assistance that might be brought from the provincial program.
Okay, thank you. The, picking up on a question that councillor Christian asked about the Community Response Committee, this may go to Mr. Dodds. I note on here that nobody from the steel industry is on the Community Response Committee. Is there any intention to have a steel representative on that committee? And/or a Tenaris representative, and/or an OLG representative, because I'm not sure any of those industries are on here.
Mayor Provinzano to the councillor, the, we actually had a discussion about that, and really, the purpose of the committee is the community response, and given that in particular, we had, we had proposed and had discussed representation from the steel workers, and that was going to be pursued, there was some discussion about that, and we thought perhaps it's more appropriate to have somebody more general, so we were going to approach the District Labor Council. So that was one piece of the puzzle, and there were some other representations that were at the initial meetings, that attended the original meetings that we thought should be added, but we were quite specific about not including representatives from the affected steel companies, because this was intended to be a community response. Now, having said that, certainly at the first meeting, we had a briefing from, from the company, and we would include them at meetings, but really the objective was the community response itself, and not get caught up into some of the other considerations that may be involved, particularly under CCAA, there's some, there's some limitations there. But it was not, it was a conscious decision, but it's not intended to exclude them. It's really more of a, of making sure where the response is sort of focused.
The, I suppose, perhaps to the CAO, through you, Mr. Mayor, the review of the EDC that was in the consent portion of the agenda tonight, as that goes ahead, it will, am I correct in assuming it will not affect this restructuring process, this, this Community Action Plan?
It shouldn't restructure, no, no relationship between the two.
Okay, good. So if there are opportunities that present themselves that require an EDC focus, the EDC will still be able to attack those as necessary?
Fully expect the EDC to be an active participant in the Community Adjustment Program.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Mr. Dodds, if possible. Well, we have councillor Bruny here. Sure, oh yeah, no, no. Go ahead.
Mr. Dodds, so clarify, there is a community response team in place?
We have been meeting since the day after the announcement of CCAA. We had a small group together, primarily of provincial representatives, representatives. The CAO was in participation, participated, and that was sort of an initial, let's find out what the outcome and what, what the implications are of the CCAA. Then we subsequently met twice with a broader group of individuals and organizations, representing the economic development organizations, the employment organizations in town, relevant provincial and federal ministries, and also in addition, appropriate representatives from the city, including the folk, the gentleman now, who's now left, but we had the folks from DSAB, Planning Department, et cetera.
So there is, to CAO, there is no intent to reinvent what there's already in place?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Butland, to be clear, there's, the Community Adjustment Advisory Program is one component of the work. That's in the immediate term, we're using that lever to be able to look at employment and training opportunities for those that are displaced workers, specifically the Tenaris layoffs that have just recently been announced on January 28. We still have the broader response that needs to be ongoing, which you've seen in the report, and you've heard here from Mr. Dodds and from myself, has been fairly active over the last couple of months, that will continue to be active on several other fronts in anticipation of the restructuring outcomes, as well as with the intent of having a community response that provides wealth for the municipality who will deal with this unique economic situation.
Final question, and is this committee ready, willing, and able to continue its involvement?
Yes, Mayor Provinzano to councillor Butland, we have had a bit of a hiatus until as such time as we had clarity on who was doing what as it relates to this particular proposal going forward.
The cap proposal.
The proposal to, yes, the MTCU proposal. The materials that you have in front of you describe the kind of plan that, you know, I fully anticipate will move forward on, and the elements of that between the city and ourselves, but I felt it was appropriate not to hold those meetings until there was clarity on this point.
Thank you. Councillor Bruny?
Through to, to the CAO, what happens if we don't receive the $200,000? That's what you're projecting. Do we have a Plan B?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we are, of course, going to continue to work on all fronts we have internally. We're hoping and have every expectation from our discussions, because we've already gone through the initial phases of the application with, with the province, and they have already gone through our paperwork and deemed them ready. It's just really who is going to be the sponsor when it comes forward, and we need council approval to be able to be that sponsor. A Plan B is we continue doing what we're doing and do the best we can within the budgets that we have allotted to us for this.
Okay, thanks. That's the extent of the question, it appears. Councillor Butland, you wanted to make a closing comment?
Gladly allow anybody else who wishes to comment.
I think it's just you, councillor Butland.
Okay.
Likely me when you're done.
What's that?
I said, and then likely me when you're done.
I suspect so, yes.
You have something to, councillor?
Yes, my first question this evening was, the January 26th, EDC wanted to apply, and we said, as a city, no, will apply. So there's a one-month hiatus, that, why? And my issue has been all along, timing, profile. This started in November, that I said, we need to raise the profile, and you said, well, you know, sure, Steve, that's fine, it's just one person. And thanks to my friend over there, he said, but just, you've been through this. I've been through this, about 25 years ago, and we had a very successful initiative in the same, the very same thing that's going on right now. So some of these things are not new, they're not mine, but the community responded in a major way. So I thank you for that, and councillor Shoemaker and I are often at different ends of the spectrum on things, but we had a very, very lengthy and positive discussion the other night, and we didn't agree on, on everything, but we said, yeah, we're both headed in the same direction, and I very much appreciate that. And I think, council, we need to grab this, and, and at the very least, let's have some dialogue amongst ourselves. And CAO, I'm glad you mentioned, and I've been saying, stand up for steel, steel profile, but they're still functioning. It's Tenaris that has 500, 600 people that are presently unemployed, and that is probably more critical probably than S.R. at the same, same time. So I'm just frustrated that November, December, January, February, and now we're going to say, we're applying for this fund, and it'll come in three or four weeks, and then we're going to look for somebody to head it. And there are names out there, and I think people have heard the names. In the interim, could we not second somebody on staff to run with this in the interim? What brought all of this to light, I think, was councillor Christian brought a resolution forward, and that has brought forward this response. The, the report is very, very good. We've got to come together, we've got to work together. Let's do it. We've got a, apparently, an active committee that's been in hiatus for a while. Let's, let's kickstart this now. Application, someone to lead it, it's, the key dates are upon us. I believe April 1st is an important date, and all the other ones are gonna fall very, very quickly. Bring these people to, to the table, and if we don't have the $200,000, well, surely, the EDF fund, access $25,000, $50,000 to keep, or not to keep it going, to kickstart this process. We shouldn't be delaying until we have some money. And I know you say, well, we're doing this, and we're doing this, and we're doing this behind the scenes. I still say, if the roundtable meets, and MP Sheehan meets with the Prime Minister, and Minister of Finance, and Mr. Orzadeh is doing what he's doing, and EDC is doing a whole lot of things, and I'm told by the union, they're doing things, and there's a group out there, C-Stack. Last time around, they were funded by the government. This time, they are not, but they're still very active, and there's a local group. And there's a local group in the community trying to mobilize everybody to say, hey, we need to put together a program now for when their UI runs out. Can they extend the UI and upgrade their skills? That happened last time. I think we should be doing that, and I believe that local group with representative from C-Stack maybe will be before us next council meeting. Is it a crisis or not? I truly believe we're at a turning point in the community. Let's, and I'm getting towards the end here, Mr. Mayor. We've got to get to specifics. The letters that go out to ministers, or the Prime Minister, whomever, from experience, they usually take two or three months to respond, because it's vetted by eight or 10 different ministers, and it comes back, you say, geez, I'm not sure what that letter says. It usually doesn't say a heckle. We have to become more specific in our requests of the government. We've got to get a delegation together of some numbers. Last time it was over 20, and we sat, or they sat in the gallery in the House of Commons. And some people got to ask questions of the government. And the two, the three caucuses are more than happy to see us. That will raise the profile of Sault Ste Marie Steel and Teneres. You can have a press conference, whether the national press will come and rate numbers or not, you don't know, but it's worth a chance. So what are some of the specifics? Well, I've got a Buy Canada resolution later today. The concept, Mr. CAO, about a mini infrastructure program that we can start right now, start a ticket, debenture some of it, talking to the Construction Association, and talking to Mr. Elliott, yes, we can do that. And the most impact it would have if you were into your buildings, improvement to your buildings, and it would be a multidisciplinary involvement of people. If you're just fixing up a road, well, that's very limited. So that would be very, very welcome, and at this time of year, for construction trades, things are a little slow. Last time around, there was a bridge pensions, people who are three months, six months, one year away from pension. The government agreed to allow them, or to subsidize that timeframe for them, so they could retire with full pension before their time. So to end this, I think we shouldn't wait for this application to go through, although we're busy, but let's kickstart this. We need to start tomorrow. Bring this committee together, let's start dialoguing. And I talked to Dr. Common today, and I said, what about this, training, upgrading skills? He said, we're under, what do you call it, underutilized right now in these programs. We would welcome people. It's called the Second Career Opportunity from the Provincial Government. He said, whatever committee is going, please invite me to be on. So it's not meant to point any fingers at anybody, and I suspect the others, you're being very critical. Let's get going, let's kickstart this tomorrow. Hamilton had a Stand Up For Steel Day a couple months ago, or a while ago. And they're suggesting, well, let's join in, May the 5th, maybe Stand Up For Steel Day, and we might join in. Let's do things now. Time is a wasting, let's get to it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
We have Counsel Christian and Counsel Shoemaker.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be relatively brief. I just, you know, I think that we all feel the same way, regardless of the approach we think we should take, we all as citizens of the Sioux want to make sure that things are, we're addressing the issues. And I think that's the bottom line, we're all concerned citizens, so we all have a sense of apprehension, a sense of fear, and that's a good thing, because we're all invested in it, so that's a good thing. And we're all trying to move on these issues that are born from this crisis. So the cities, the citizens are eager, they're worried, they want to see things happen, and the sooner the better. It's like any crisis that you have, you want to get it behind you as quickly as possible. So, you know, when we have crises like this, whether they're personal, professional, everybody jumps in and tries to get things, get the ball rolling, and I think everybody's been well-intended so far. It is good to hear with this report, as I originally requested, that at least we're heading in that direction, and that's a good thing. Again, if it could have happened sooner, that would have been great, but at least we're moving in that direction, and that's important. I mean, we're dealing with restructuring and bankruptcy of Essar, we've got the Teneres issue, we have anti-dumping issues, we have creditor issues, the fallout of employment or lack of employment in the city if this doesn't shake out the way we want it to. So it is like the past, but it's unprecedented as well. This is the perfect storm, as they say. And so we need to all step back as a community, and I really encourage the community to let us know exactly how they feel about the situation. I think everybody needs to be part of the dialogue. I'm glad to see that the report comes in, and at least we're heading in that direction. And I encourage everybody to pull together and start doing what we have to do as a community, not just elected officials, not just the CAO's office, everybody try to do their part, no matter how small it is. I'm confident now that, you know, we've got the issues on the table, we've got some things we can sink our teeth into, and I encourage everybody to move forward at this point.
Counsel Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and excellent report, Mr. CAO. I thought it identified well what's being done, and I know that all that hasn't just been done as a result of the report being requested, it's been ongoing, and it's sort of come to us as a result of the report being requested. So glad to see that this is all happening. The priorities that I think are being focused on, which are the trade remedies, the procurement policies, and pension issues, are the three issues, I think everyone agrees, are the way that we need to approach this to help the survivability of the industry. So Counsel Butland makes good proposals in terms of how we can help those who are currently laid off from Teneres or AlGoma. I think the proposals that Essar is pushing, the proposals that Teneres pushed in his letters and op-ed, which was excellent, Mr. Mayor, and that I know the CAO mentioned in his report, he's been pushing the issues I pushed when I went to the Roma Conference, are those identified by Essar Steel as affecting the future viability of the industry. So I think the difference really is between what Counsel Butland and what this reporter is saying. Counsel Butland's saying, let's get some concrete proposals in place to help those who are currently struggling. Absolutely, we can do those at the same time as pushing the three priorities that are identified by Essar Steel to help the future viability of the industry. I think, you know, we're going to be talking about a lot more layoffs if we don't solve the underlying issues in the industry, the steel dumping, the low oil prices, I mean, there's not much we can do about that, but if we don't attack the issues that are creating this circumstance, we're going to be dealing with these issues for much longer. So I applaud that the issues that are being tackled by Essar, by CAO, by mayor, and the ones that we're asked to sort of get behind in this report are the ones that really will help the future viability of the industry, and I think those are critical to try and get resolved.
Counsel Hollingsworth.
Thank you. I just want to say, I thought the report was well-written with regards to giving examples of what has been done up to this point, so thank you. I especially like to, I noticed that you were talking about the mini-stimulation plan. I like how you address small and medium business, businesses that are currently existing, because we have to realize that they're going to be impacted as well. Don't get me wrong, Essar and Teneres, very important. But, and I also not really mentioned the report, but I know that we're heading towards a plan for the city, and so that we can focus on being diversified, so that should this happen again, hopefully our impact will be different. So I just want to say, I think we are on the right track, and maybe time moves a little bit off, but we're getting there.
Any other comments from council? I have one very brief one, I think, to conclude this. I'm not concerned at all, Counsel Butland, about criticism, and, you know, I would expect that all of us that sit here are open to constructive criticism of what we do and how we do it. What I'd be concerned about is, I think, inaccuracy, and I think that some of your comments might convey the impression to the community that this isn't being worked on with urgency, or it's not being worked on with urgency under a unified plan. And I don't believe that's accurate. So I'd just like to assure the community that since November, and in December, and in January, that I've worked on this in conjunction with your Member of Parliament, in conjunction with your provincial Member of Parliament, and we've done that in conjunction with the leaders of the two industries most substantially affected, Teneres and AlGoma Steel. We've done that in conjunction with the Canadian Steel Producers Association. We're in constant contact with the Canadian Steel Producers Association. We've also met with the unions that are involved in this matter. So it's been an ongoing, unified, intense effort for months. It will continue to be. These are very complex issues. Counsel Christian's right, we're dealing with a number of different things. We're dealing with a major employer who's laid off hundreds of people, and that is directly related to the price of oil. Now, if any of you think you can influence Saudi Arabia, I welcome you to go and try and do that. But in the meantime, I'm working with the executive at Teneres, and sensitive to what they want to see done, and some of the things that you've seen me do were directly related to things that I've talked about with them. AlGoma Steel is another very complex and complicated issue. It's subject to CCAA proceedings, that's a legal proceeding. We're significantly involved in that. There are some things that we're going to need to do in the next short term to make sure that that goes our way. And by our way, I mean the community's way. So I just want the community to rest assured that I, as your mayor, am aware of these issues, I'm sensitive to all of them, and I spend all of my time focused on these issues. I might not be doing, Counsel Butland, all the things that you want to see me do, but I am doing all the things in my judgment as the mayor of the community that I need to be doing and should be doing. I welcome all of your input, I welcome all of your participation, and if this city council wants to take an active role and do something, I welcome you to do that. In the meantime, I'll keep on conducting myself as I think I should in my set of responsibilities. And I just want to assure everybody at large that we're aware of the issue, we're sensitive to it, and senior city staff and I are working on it on a daily basis.
Madam Clerk?
Under Agenda Item 8.1, and Counsel Bruny has actually declared a pecuniary interest with respect to this item, as his daughter is employed by the EDC. It's a motion by Counselor Shoemaker. Counsel Romano?
One second, the CAO just pointed out to me, I thought the CAP was inside the consent agenda, is it external to the consent agenda?
That's right.
Oh, so we have to vote on that motion?
Yes.
Okay. So we're just, we have to vote on the, this?
And I did read it.
Yeah, so before us is the motion that approves our application to the CAP. All in favor? Carried. So that motion was read at the beginning of our conversation.
Yep.
Can I continue, Madam Clerk?
Agenda Item 8.1, can I have a second or, as Counsel Romano isn't here? This is the Economic Development Review that...
Counsel Hollingsworth.
Motion by Counselor Shoemaker and Hollingsworth, whereas the Corporation of the City of Sault Ste Marie has a memorandum of understanding with the Sault Ste Marie Economic Development Corporation dated September 28, 2009, naming the EDC as the city's lead agency on economic development. And whereas the city provides annual funding to the Sault Ste Marie EDC in the approximate amount of $1.7 million per annum. And whereas the city has a memorandum of understanding with the Sault Ste Marie Innovation Center dated April 12, 2010, that identifies the mission of the Sault Ste Marie Innovation Center as to drive business growth, facilitate research, and commercialize innovation in globally significant areas of science and technology. And whereas the city provides annual funding to the Sault Ste Marie Innovation Center in the amount of $277,890 per annum. And whereas the city allocates an additional $500,000 per annum to the Economic Development Fund for the purposes of supporting new job creation, tax assessment, and economic development projects. And whereas the funds allocated to the Sault Ste Marie EDC, Sault Ste Marie Innovation Center, and the EDF represents the majority of the city's investment in economic development. And whereas the city recognizes the importance of effective economic development and the need to diversify its economy and grow its assessment base. And whereas the city has a responsibility to ensure that it is making the most effective and efficient use of its economic development funds. Now therefore be it resolved that city council direct the chief administrative officer to undertake an assessment either directly and/or with the assistance of an independent third party of the city's economic development, and provide a report to council outlining the following. One, best practices and models for effective economic development. Two, how the city's economic development model compares to best practices. And three, recommendations on what the city could and/or should be doing to ensure that its economic development efforts are producing the best results.
So I want to speak to this briefly, counsel, because I wrote the motion, and I thank Counsel Shoemaker and Counsel Hollingsworth for putting it forward. This is actually dovetails with the previous conversation. We are where we are right now, not as a result of something that happened in the last short term. We are where we are as a result of a number of years. And we're not going to turn anything around in our community in any kind of quick or short-term way. We need to make really good fundamental decisions so that our municipality operates the best way it can. And I think this council has to satisfy itself that it is doing everything it can for economic development. Now, we take care of economic development three ways. We essentially outsource to the EDC through our memorandum of understanding in that respect, and we fund them. We do the same thing with the Innovation Center through our memorandum of understanding, we fund them, and then we have a half million dollars that we allocate. I feel very strongly that we need to ensure as a community that we're doing everything we can for the future, so that we're making great economic development decisions as a city council, not necessarily as separate agencies that are funded by the city council. So this is one more piece I see in a larger puzzle of ensuring some prosperity for our community down the road. None of this is going to be quick and easy, but frankly, I've been here now for 14 months, and it seems to me it's due time that we ask ourselves if we're doing the best we can on economic development. And the motion was written in that spirit, and I would appreciate council's support on it, because I think it's a very important piece of the puzzle. Any questions or comments on it?
Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reviewing the MOUs is something that I think is good to do every now and then, regardless of whether or not any changes are ultimately made. I think it is prudent to look at where we're spending our money, to determine if it's being spent the most efficient way, efficiently, as efficiently as possible, I guess I'm trying to say, and to determine whether or not that is achieving the desired result, which of course is economic development. What I, you know, I'm not predetermining what the issue should be. I'd love to see if we're spending two and a half million dollars approximately on economic development in the city, and only $500,000 of that is going directly to economic development in terms of our EDF. I'd love to see if there's a way to maximize the amount that can go directly to economic development within our community, and sort of minimize the overhead in a sense, and see if there is a way to really unleash the potential of our economic development fund so that, you know, if we're ever in a situation like we're currently in in the future, hopefully we will have diversified our economy enough to insulate us in some respects. Obviously, our major industries will always be major players in our city, but I think unleashing the potential of the economic development fund to insulate us from future crises, crises, if there are any, would be an excellent outcome if we could achieve that.
Thank you. So we have Counsel Christian next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the resolution. I support it on the grounds that we as a community need, as Counsel Shoemaker pointed out, need to do our very best in trying to move the economy forward. I don't view this review as a finger-pointing exercise. We're in competition with the rest of the world. It's very competitive out there, and I want to make sure that we're doing everything... It's very competitive out there, and I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can as a community, utilizing best practices. Perhaps there's a new approach we should be looking at. I think this is a healthy exercise. And really, the numbers bear themselves out. The fact of the matter is that the last time we went through a restructuring like this, Agoma Steel employed, I think, close to 13,000. And we're still going through this crisis with an employment ba- with the Essar at 3,000. So the fact is, we're not diversified enough. It's not saying it's anybody's fault, it's just a fact. So we need to look at what we're doing so that we could insulate ourselves from these problems in the future. Essar Steel needs to be a part of our community, but it certainly can't be the entire life's blood of this community. And therein, in my opinion, lies the problem. We welcome Essar, we need Essar, but we need to get to a point where if these things crop up in the future, the hit to the community isn't as severe. Economic development helps us in so many ways. It's going to increase our tax base, it'll allow us to do things that we can't do right now. And I know I'm saying things that are obvious, but I'm simply saying that I think we need to go through this exercise as a healthy exercise to see how it is we move the city forward economically in the next little while.
To your point, Councilor Christian, I think when the Essar group of companies purchased Essar in 2007, there were approximately 3,400 employees. We're down to 2,700 now.
Okay.
So you see where the trend is going in that respect.
Yeah.
Councilor Kompadich?
Yeah, just one question, Mayor Provenzano, when you also support the resolution. Just a question on, when can we expect to hear back? If council supports the res- when can we expect to hear back from the CAO with the recommendations?
He can, probably just best if he walk you through the process as he conceives it.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to council and to Councilor Kompadich. The, as I, we understand from staff, the expectations, we could be looking at a third-party review. So we would be looking at having representation from all the major groups to be involved in setting up the terms of reference for that, taking it out to market to get the advice to be brought back, and then evaluate and bring forward for council's consideration. Of course, EDC, sorry, the Economic Development Corporation, Innovation Center are key parts of that. We also look at the Canadian Development Corporation and some of the internal city folk as being important to that process. Specifically, economic development also relates to attracting developers in the industrial, commercial, residential areas. And so there's programs, grant programs, we have available there that are being utilized as well. So we think that'd be part of the terms of reference that need to go out. All that being said, I would suspect it'll be in the third quarter, late in the third quarter, so in the summertime that we'd be able to come back with some recommendations for council's consideration.
Okay, is that it, Councilor Kompadich?
Thank you.
Councilor Butland?
Yeah. This pew is very uncomfortable. It was before, and it is going to be more uncomfortable now. First of all, I apologize for up and down, standing and sitting. I can stand for 12 hours, I can't sit for more than 15 or 20 minutes at a time, and hopefully in April, that will be looked after. So I'm not being rude. Okay, on this one, as the other one that may come forward on privatizing, I'm not in favor of either, particularly the other one. But my issue is timing. And I'm going back to what I've already talked about. When you're going through a crisis, you don't put things like this on the table. You're getting calls from these folks, maybe not these folks, but their friends, their coworkers, saying, "Mr. Butland, will I be losing my job as a result of privatizing?" And I said, "Well, you're way ahead of the game, and, you know, at this point in time, let's go easy." But it does add to the malaise in the community. My hope is, let's do positive things, not add to the malaise, and make people uneasy about their future. Just last council meeting, we said, "Wow, what a great job you people are doing." There was not one person who said, "PWT is-"
Councilor Butland, this, it's nothing, that's, the motion's not before us right now.
Which one?
The PWT issue.
Oh, oh, I realize that, okay. No, it's not. Okay, I, I'm sorry, I'm off track. So it's just the EDC?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let's say whatever you want about the PWT motion when that one comes up, but right now, if we can just stay on the EDC-
Well, I'm relating the two, because they are, they are, in my mind, they are related. When things are bad, we look to assign blame. We say, "Well, why are we in this situation? And who's the logical one to blame? It's got to be EDC. It's the Innovation Center."
As the author of the motion, Councilor Butland, I wasn't looking to assign blame to anybody, just to make it clear to all those folks, good folks at the Innovation Center and the EDC. I was the author of the motion, I'm not looking to assign blame to either of those groups. They're not why we're in the situation we're in.
Perhaps when I finish my comment, Mr. Mayor, you can comment. Thank you. And my issue is, have people spoken to staff individually? Have we gone down and said, "What do you do, John Ferbaro? What do you do, Dan Hollingsworth? What do you do, Tom Dodds? What do you do, you McMillan?" And if we haven't, would that not be the courtesy before we say, "By the way, we're going to review"? The connotation is, you're not doing a good job. So I'm not against this at all. The other one, probably I will be against it. But the timing, the timing, where we just talked 15 minutes ago, how EDC and the city are working together on this plan to, with the CEO, and to address our issues. And at the same time, we're saying, "We have to review what you're doing." Again, I'm not against it, I just think the timing is bad. And a fellow by the name of Mulroni said, "You know, I know what I'm saying is probably not very popular." It's not popular, but-
I have to say it, thank you. We have Councilor Shoemaker and then Councilor Hollingsworth. Okay.
I actually have said my comments on this, but Councilor Butland spoke specifically to another issue on the agenda. I'd like to address those comments after this is voted on.
Can we address it when we get to those, that issue on the agenda?
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilor Hollingsworth?
I just wanted to say, to reiterate, this review is a natural process in most corporations. I think all of us around the council chambers, or even outside of the chambers, have gone through reviews, either in a department or even our jobs. It's just a healthy way just to touch base. And with regards to second piece, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I believe that this is basically supported by the EDC board, this review. So having said that, it's just a chance for us to take a higher level, just to make sure if we're on track or not, and where we can maybe make adjustments if needed.
Anybody, anybody else, Councilor Fatah, did you, you were looking at me, so I'm just wondering if you had a comment?
Yeah, comment, yes, yeah.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Can I ask Mr. Dodds to speak on something? Just a couple of quick questions.
Is it related to the motion that's before us?
Well, it relates to the whole process of economic development and what they're trying to achieve. I think the questions are pertinent to what we're trying to achieve with this whole-
If it's relevant to the motion, you're certainly allowed to ask it, Councilor Fatah. We're going to go down the road a bit, to see if they're relevant to the motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mr. Dodds, my, like, my question basically is this, what I want to ask you briefly here is, like, do, in your opinion, based on the experiences that you've had in the past, and John Ferbaro and so forth, have you felt that based on the responses from outside companies, that the tax rates here in Sault Ste Marie have been detrimental in terms of attracting the-
That's not relevant to this motion, Councilor Fatah. We're going to have a full discussion on taxes, and that's going to be something that the Commissioner of Finances puts before us. We're actually going to talk about tax rates. So any questions you have about tax rates, I suggest to you, we should have that discussion when the, that puts before us. Right now, what we're talking about is doing a review of our economic development funding, not the EDC specifically, our economic development funding, and how the city itself, how the city of Sault Ste Marie is doing its economic development.
Yeah, I'm certainly in favor of this, of this study, of course.
But can you, so can you save your questions on taxes, then, for the Commissioner of Finance and Peter Lippa, who will be attending to do a session with us on taxes?
Yeah. Can I just ask one question regarding costs? Last time that we had this conversation, this same conversation a few years ago, we were, we were being told that, "Well, if you want to get it done, it's going to cost about $80,000 to do a study." And it seemed to turn, turn a few of us off, because we were going to study something to see whether it is viable to continue having the EDC in its current state. And then saying, "Well, it's going to cost you about $80,000 to have a study done." And the last study that I looked at, I thought, personally, I thought was a little bit biased. It didn't come across as being totally impartial, and that was something that I recall from that. So if we're going to go down that same road with this, and end up coming down with, with the end result being, "Well, everything's sugar-coated, everything's fine just the way it is, I think we should leave everything the way it is," instead of looking at it and saying, "Wait a minute, maybe the EDC is way too broad now." It used to be, I always thought of the EDC that the intent there was to attract small and medium-sized industries.
So your question, Mr. Dodds, you can, you can sit down. Your question, Councilor Fatah, is-
My concern is, it's a concern, because we're, we're going to look at this, and we're going to try and dissect it every which way, but the point being is that there's issues that I've always had with the EDC.
Let me address, let me address your concern, okay? Because I think I understand it. And if I don't understand it, you can correct me. This isn't, I wasn't here the last time you went through this. I understand, in speaking to Mr. Strapp, who was the former executive director of the EDC, that they did a report in 2008. And that was one they commissioned that looked at just the EDC. This is different. This isn't something that one of the agencies is commissioned to looking at itself. The city itself spends $2.5 million to promote economic development. We do that different ways. This report is us. We're commissioning someone to say, "How are we doing this, and are we doing it the best we can?" So, like, it won't be something that's commissioned by the Innovation Center or commissioned by the EDC. This is something being commissioned by the city, and it's a broad look at how we're doing this. There are a number of different models out there. Things have evolved in the last number of years since the 2008 report the EDC did, and I think that it's a more fulsome analysis of that. No money will be spent on it until this council approves the retaining of somebody to do it. So that is a discussion and a debate that you will certainly be part of, and if you're not satisfied with the amount, it won't go ahead. But the first step is to authorize the CEO to do this, and he'll meet with the different stakeholders, develop a term of reference, and then he'll be able to come back and tell us what it's going to cost. Now, it would be a hard thing to do, because we have to tell him to go down this road. Did I address your concern?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay. Anything else in this council? See, now that we have a vote on the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried.
I'm going to move to planning, under Agenda Item 7.6.1, Application A416Z at 127 Pilgrim Street. I'll read the motion by Councilors Hoopan and Aniro, resolved that the report of the planner dated March 7, 2016, concerning rezoning application A416Z be received, and that council approve the rezoning of the subject property from low-density residential zone R3 to low-density residential zone R3S, with a special exception, to permit a fourplex in addition to those uses permitted in an R3 zone, subject to the following special exceptions. One, that two of the required parking spaces be stacked. Two, that the north interior yard be reduced to 1.2 meters or four feet for the existing building only. Three, that parking be prohibited from locating in the front yard of the subject property. And then a further condition was added subsequent to a meeting with a neighboring property owner, that the owner submits a drainage plan to the satisfaction of the municipal services engineer or his designate, and that all drainage works proposed in the plan be completed to the satisfaction of the municipal services engineer prior to the issuance of a final occupancy permit for the proposed fourplex. The overall intent of the drainage plan is to direct water away from neighboring properties, and that the legal department be directed to prepare the necessary bylaw to effect this approval.
Okay, so I can ask you, Mr. McConnell, if you could give a precis of this for the viewers at home, and then once you're complete, we'll move on to the matter.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. This is an application to rezonate property on the west side of Pilgrim Street to permit a fourplex. There will be no change to the exterior of the existing building, all of the work will be done inside. As our clerk, as our deputy clerk mentioned, there is a change to the original resolution in that we've added a fourth condition dealing with drainage. As a result of concerns that were expressed by one of the neighbors this afternoon, there was an onsite meeting, I believe all parties have agreed to this. It is recommended for approval, the application is recommended approval, and the applicant is represented tonight by his grandson, by his grandson, Mr. Lentil.
Okay, so do we have the applicant or his representative here? Would, come to the mic, please, would you, would you like to make any representations to council?
No.
No, no representations?
No.
Do we have any questions of the applicant council? Councilor Fatah?
Quick question, if I may. So are the concerns of the neighbor to the north, like, have they been satisfied as far as the, Mr. McConnell, the, all the, all the conditions have been satisfied for the neighbor to the north?
Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Fatah, my understanding is, and in correspondence with the neighbor to the north, his, he was not opposed to the application, his only concern was with regards to drainage into the rear of his property. And my understanding is, as a result of this meeting that was held this afternoon with our municipal services engineer, he's now satisfied with council's approval.
Very good, thank you.
So can you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Oh, my name's Patrick Lentil.
Okay, and you're, you're here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so any people in the law, in the gallery that want an opportunity to speak against this planning application? Seeing no one looking for the opportunity to speak against the planning app, application, having no more questions in the planning application, the applicant having no comments to make, we can call a vote on the application. All in favor? Application's carried. Thank you, sir. That is the extent of our planning agenda. We can go back to 8.2. 2. Okay, before we get into this, this is the matter, I imagine, Council Shoemaker, that you want an opportunity to speak to. I'll just give council a heads-up. I called Council Shoemaker yesterday because there are two things. Right now, we don't have a second for this motion, so we would need a second for it. Obviously, if it doesn't get a second, the motion fails, and we don't speak to it to any extent. The other issue I see is that the motion's incomplete. The motion calls for striking committee, and the only person right now willing to sit on the committee is Council Shoemaker. So beyond having a second, I suggested to Council Shoemaker, you need the committee, right? So if we don't have two people willing to sit on this committee, I don't think the motion can really, two people willing to sit on the committee with Council Shoemaker, I don't think the motion proceeds. Procedurally, I think it's an incomplete motion, and if it's a motion to strike a committee of three people, and only one person's willing to sit on it, I don't see how it, how it carries. So I'm going to, I'm going to, pardon me? Yeah, so I'm walking you through the whole thing here. So the first thing is, if there's a second, then I'm going to determine whether there's anybody else interested in sitting on this committee. And if we don't fulfill those two conditions, I don't see the matter proceeding. So do we have someone that is interested in seconding this motion? So I think it's highly unlikely in the circumstances, Council Shoemaker, that you would find someone willing to sit on the committee with you. Counselor, I'm going, I'm, well, no, I, I think it's fair to let him address Councilor Butland's comments, because the matter's on the agenda, the motion's not being debated, but when, but Councilor Butland made those, the comments about privatization, I didn't let him comment on it, because this matter was on the agenda later, and he- Hold, no, it is, listen, we're not debating this motion. I made it clear from the outset that the motion wasn't going to be debated, but I think it's appropriate to let Councilor Shoemaker speak to the comments that Councilor Butland made, because I didn't let him speak to those comments under that item, because this was on the agenda. So I'm going to let him speak to Councilor Butland's comments, and then we're going to move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's shocking to me that members of this council don't understand what this motion says. This is not a motion to privatize snowplowing, as it's been misconstrued. This is a motion for me and two other volunteers on this council to look at three cost centers in our city and determine if there are savings to be found. I challenge every one of you to look at Essar laid off employees, Teneres laid off employees, and tell them you weren't even willing to look at saving costs in our budget in future years, and explain to them why their taxes are going to go up in future years. You weren't even willing to assess whether or not there were savings to be had. So congratulations to all of you for not even looking at these cost centers.
No, I, I-
That's, that's, Counselor Butland, excuse me, Counselor Butland specifically said-
Counselor Shoemaker, please, one second. Your comments- Your comments are now made. They, they did go farther than I originally anticipated. I would agree with council that we can't address the matter further. I should have just had you address it when you had asked to address it earlier. And I didn't think it was fair, because I didn't let you address it earlier, not to give you the chance to address it now. But the motion isn't before us, so we shouldn't be debating it.
Mr. Mayor, procedure.
Yeah.
We cannot strike a resolution on the fly in city council. We already had a motion earlier, previous meeting. So all the, the secondar and the, all the information should be in front of us, so we can debate on it. It shouldn't be discussed while council is being conducted.
He put, this was a notice of motion. He put it up...
So we had plenty of time since the last meeting...
Yeah.
...to get a secondar and to come up with a committee nominee. So to have this discussion, in my opinion, it's out of order.
Yeah, well, the motion failed.
Well, after debates and after comments, although...
It wasn't, it wasn't debated, Council Circle. We could, we can move on, Madam Clerk.
Agenda Item 8.3, I have a notice of motion by Councilors Butland and Christian, whereas Buy America policies have effectively excluded Canadian steel producers from participating in American infrastructure projects since 2008, and whereas international trade agreements often prevent federal and provincial jurisdictions from overriding any pertinent clauses, and whereas the Liberal Government has dedicated 125 billion dollars over the next 10 years for Canadian infrastructure projects, supplemented by 200 to 300 million dollars a year from the provincial government, and whereas municipalities may be exempt from some or all of the restrictions which could preclude a Buy Canadian policy, and whereas Sault Ste. Marie has put into place a 10% Canadian content policy, which is rarely, if ever, utilized, and whereas this policy has never been contested and could serve as precedent-setting, and whereas any trade laws applicable to steel dumping are seemingly ineffectual and also involve considerable cost and time to pursue, now therefore be it resolved that this resolution with information be forwarded to our legal and purchasing departments to determine whether or not a municipality can implement a Buy Canadian Act or not dissimilar to the Buy America Act. And further be it resolved that should the results of the above prove positive, that Sault Ste. Marie adopt such a policy and approach our parent organization, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, to endorse the act and solicit similar resolutions for member municipalities.
Okay. Are we on bylaws now, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
So we have the bylaws?
I have a motion by Councilors Hoopin and Turco, resolved that all bylaws under Item 11 of the agenda, under date March 7, 2016, be approved?
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by Councilors Hoopin and Nero, that this council now adjourn.
All in favor? So we're adjourned, council. Our next meeting starts in 15 minutes.